Order. The regular meeting for Thursday, March 1st, 2018. Real quick, I'd like everybody to remind everybody to silence their phones or any electronic devices. If you have any blue slips, please bring them to Ms. Jessica before the item that you wish to speak on, please. Have our invocation and pledge allegiance by Ms. Trimmie.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our most honorable, gracious, heavenly Father, thank you for those here tonight.
Here.
Be with them, bless them.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Bless those that have to make decisions tonight if they make the good and right decisions
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott is out of town this evening. Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
that you hope, that I hope that we are making.
Vice President White?
Here.
And President Ferris.
Lord, lead us and guide us through our paths of life.
Thank you. Item number four is a public hearing. We're going to come back to that at 6:00 PM.
Help those right now that are hurting with the rains and the floods and damaged properties
Item number five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits.
and hopefully all people are saved and there aren't any fatalities.
Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have two special event permits that we recommend that you...
I'm...
I got a motion by Mr. Landry, a second by Mr. Gidry.
Thank each one of us here tonight. We thank you, Lord, for your guidance and your leadership and stay in our hearts that
Any discussion? Any objection?
we may do the right thing for the people of Calquashew Parish.
Hear none. Item carries.
I ask you to be with us as we go through this meeting and be with us for all of the
Item number six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices.
tomorrows.
I got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour.
I ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item eight, consideration of approving the parish-wide drainage committee report dated February 28, 2018.
all.
All right, item number four, we're going to come back to at 6:00 PM. Mr. Scott is absent.
So...
Mr. President, we...
Seven. Excuse me. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated February 1st, 2018. Oh, excuse me, roll call, please. I got a motion by Mr. McMillan, Mr. McMillan, and a second by Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Angipon?
Any discussion?
Down.
Mr. Brain?
Any objection?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Motion carries.
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Item eight, consideration of approving the parish-wide drainage committee report dated
Mr. Gidry?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
February 20th, 2018.
Here.
So move on eight. Received a report from staff summarizing a proposed phase of study for parish-wide drainage maintenance. The committee recommended that the police jury approve the staff's proposal for conducting the operational assessment phase of the parish-wide drainage management study, which included an updated profile of the current gravity drainage district system, map, millages, budgets, et cetera, a review of drainage district operation in various areas, finance, human resources, risk management, et cetera, a review of the drainage district structure in the parish, and the recommendations on how the management of drainage can be improved at the district level. Also discussed, excuse me, was the proposed timeline going forward, which included a meeting with drainage district representatives on February 26, 2018, and final action by the police jury on March 1st, 2018. I got a motion by Mr. McMillan to accept and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? We have one speaker on this. Mr. Atherton. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street. Always appreciate the opportunity to, you know, to offer suggestions and comments. And one of the ways we believe that the police jury can actually help gravity drainage districts would be that we believe the police jury should sponsor state and federal legislation and fight the legal fight to give drainage districts the permanent legal right to clean drainage laterals throughout and across federal highways, state highways, railroads, pipelines, and SRA canals, and also to fight the legislation, whatever you need to do, so that drainage districts don't have to get an Army Corps permit every time they clean something or to pay the mitigation fees. Any of this legal stuff that at some point you're going to have to deal with it anyway. So we would, we would like to see that be put in, to begin the process to move it forward, just like you're doing with this right now. We'd also like for the police jury to be sure that the gravity drainage districts have copies of all of the parish drainage studies, past and present, and include the drainage districts and all communications with all contractors like Feimster-Maker, CRS, USCR, all those guys, and all others that have done studies or are doing studies. And then we think it would be extremely helpful if the parish gave the gravity drainage districts a copy of the parish road ditch maintenance cleaning program, your plan, how you go about cleaning the parish roadside ditches, but more important, the schedule and the timeframe by which you do this, because then the drainage districts can coordinate cleaning the associated drainage laterals with the parish roadside cleaning program. So whenever you clean a roadside ditch, you make sure the lateral is not plugged up with barrels or washing machines or whatever, because, I mean, for years, we've watched the roads flood while the gravity drainage, the laterals are only a third or half full. So we believe these are some of the things you can do to further assist the gravity drainage. I'll be happy to answer any questions or kick it to death. Whatever your pleasure. We good?
Any further discussion from the jurors? Mr. Latour?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate on sort of the first one you talked about as far as the right-of-ways going through litigation and everything for the drainage boards. Myself and several of the drainage board presidents or members, I met with Stephen Dwight, and some of his staff is actually looking into some of the right-of-ways to see how they can stiffen it up where we can actually have access, but just wanted to give you a little tidbit that we are working on that currently with Stephen Dwight.
Well, this, what I'm speaking to is old established right-of-ways.
Yes, sir.
You know, and because the beavers are killing the railroad trestles, you know, the drainage through the trestles. So thank you for your, for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Any further discussion? Motion to receive report carries. Consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated February 22nd, 2018. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a professional engineering contract between the police jury and Oakland Associates Incorporated for the Packing House Multi-Bridge Replacement Project. B recommended that the, that a resolution be adopted approving an active sale agreement between the police jury and Prairie Land Company for the Goche Road, Lake Charles Regional Airport Sewer Transport System, Project Phase Two. C recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a cooperative endeavor in grievance between the police jury and Jefferson Davis Parish Police Jury for the reconstruction and maintenance of Pine Hill Cemetery Road in Ward Eight. D recommended that a resolution be adopted approving a memorandum of agreement between the police jury and the Corps of Engineers, Department of the Army, and the, and for the expedited processing of Section 10/404 permit applications. E recommended that a resolution be adopted accepting Calquashew Parish Project Number 2015-08, Goche Road, Lake Charles Regional Airport Sewer Transport System, Phase One in Calquashew Parish as substantially complete. F recommended that a resolution be adopted accepting Maggie's Ridge Phase One subdivision. G recommended that a resolution be adopted accepting Maggie's Ridge Phase Two subdivision. H advised that Calquashew Parish was found to be in full compliance by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for the 2017 annual review. That is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Brain. I have a motion by Mr. Kevin White, a second by Mr. Latour. Any objection? Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 10...
Move on 10.
...consideration of approving, approving the Agenda Committee report dated February 22nd, 2018. I have a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of authorizing the publication of a notice in the official journal to notify the public that the police jury will consider official action at its regular meeting on April 5th, 2018, at 5:30 PM to call an election to be held on November 6th, 2018, for authority to renew, levy, and collect the following ad valorem tax millages. Item A, Calquashew Parish Courthouse Complex and Correctional Center, a special 3.27 mil tax for 10 years for the purpose of maintaining and operating the courthouse complex and correctional center. Mr. Beam?
Thank you, Mr. President. We can take these one at a time, if you don't mind, on A.
I'd like to make a motion so we can discuss them. Make a motion on item A to accept.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. The, both of these are tax renewals that are nearing, because of their terms are nearing expiration. The item A, the courthouse and jail tax is what we kind of call it for short, but it has been in place a long time. It funds, as the title suggests, a lot of cost related to, you have to run the jail as a parish. The sheriff operates it, but you have to provide the jail and maintain it. And that's the same with all the buildings in the courthouse complex near downtown. So this is a very fairly straightforward renewal. The reason we're having to bring this up so early for what is a November 6, 2018 election is because state law requirements over time have gotten stricter about notice. So you, tonight is simply, in accordance with state law, you are putting on your agenda that on April 5th, you're going to take action on the item for calling the tax renewal. And that's for both of these, but certainly answer any questions you have before we go to item B.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Any discussion on this item? Any objection? Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Item carries. Item B? Move on B. Calquashew Parish Public Library System, a special 5.99 mil tax for 10 years for the purpose of maintaining, constructing, equipping, operating, and supporting the library system and its facilities.
Okay, same situation here. It's just the same timing situation. This is a strict renewal for the library system. What you are, as the police jury, you actually call the tax. The funds all go to the library that is run by a library board you appoint. And it's a little confusing, but again, this is how state law works. So the library isn't actually calling the tax, but they, of course, get the revenues from that. I did want to take this opportunity, since it is with the library, if you would allow Marjorie Harrison, the director, to come up, just, just to kind of give you a quick summary of how, what they're doing out the library. They've got a lot of good things going and just to keep you informed. And certainly, if you have any questions for me, her, and she's got, I think, a couple of board members with her as well, just to kind of give you an update with this opportunity. At this time, with your permission, Mr. President, I'll ask Marjorie Harrison to come up, Director of the Library System.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
All right, state your name and address and position with the library system.
Yes, my name is Marjorie Harrison, and my address is my home, physical, my home address?
You can put the...
Library address. 101 West Claude Street in Lake Charles. And my position is Library Director.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So I wanted to talk to you a little bit just about our strategic plan, and because we're coming to the end of our current strategic plan, and we're looking forward to developing a new strategic plan. And in 2013, the library held 11 community meetings with residents of the community, and they got feedback and talked about the libraries, and that input was brought to the library board and staff, and a strategic plan was developed. And so in 2013 of March, the 2014, 2018 strategic plan went into place. And so when I came on board, we just went forward with, you know, what was happening with the strategic plan, and there's a lot happening with the strategic plan. One of our focuses is community organizations and really focusing on programming and special events and bringing the library out to the community. And some of the things that we do with the community, we partner with different organizations, and we collaborate. We, we've collaborated with recreation districts. We bring performers to summer camps so that youth who are a part of those programs are able to engage in library programs there when they might not be able to get to the library. We also can partner with the City of Lake Charles, with the Susquehanna Centennial Programs, with the City of Lake Charles Leadership Team for Community Diversity and Inclusion, with the Faces of Our Community Program. We work with communities such as the Iowa Arts and Crafts Festival, the DeQuincy Railroad Festival, the Vinton Heritage Festival, and so we really, that was a focus, and we wanted to get out there and be a part of the community. And then another big focus with that was serving the underserved. And so we have this program called Library to Go, and it's wonderful. And I just wanted to share this with you because it's one of those things that we, we hear a lot about. It's a lot of positive feedback from our, you know, constituents, and they, they love the Library to Go program. So if, if you're homebound, if you're unable to get to the library, we bring the library to you. So we're, we're all over the place. We're delivering materials, and the service is really growing, and that, that handle just gives you an idea of how it's growing and how we, it has an impact on the community. We go to senior centers. We go to the juvenile detention center. We, we're out there, and we're doing story times. We're doing book talks, and we're getting children interested in reading. And so those are some of the things that we, we want to do with a community focus. And then also bringing the community into our buildings. Our community meeting rooms have really expanded in use. And so we're bringing, not all of our libraries have meeting rooms, but those that do, just since 2015, we've seen a 37% increase in use in our libraries with the community meeting rooms. So that's another piece of it, too. And then also technology. I mean, technology's changing. We use technology differently now. And so that was a focus as well with the strategic plan. And so just some of the things that we've been doing, we've made our website and library more virtual. So, so yes, we're bringing the community, the library to you. You can come into our library physically, but also you can access materials online. And so we've really expanded our online book collection. You can download audiobooks. You can download video, and you can books, audio, video, and music, all those things just from your home. And so we're trying to make the library more remote as well. And so we have lots of subscriptions to databases, and one of the things we added was Lynda.com, which helps people learn, you know, skills, and they can do it right from home. And a lot of businesses adopt that as well. So those are just some of the things that we've been focusing on. The library had more than 600,000 visitors in 2017, and so I guess with the kind of conclusion of this year, we'll be finalizing our strategic plan, and so we're kicking off a new strategic planning process. And so that's going to start in March, this month. And so we're lighting up right now. We're going to have some community focus groups at all the branches in the library system. And so I welcome everyone to, to attend. We're going to put a, put that out in the media and let people know about it. And so that would be the opportunity to tell us how we can improve, what you need. We want to hear from you, and then we'll take that information and put together another strategic plan. So that's where we're at.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Really, that's, that's a lot. You guys have been busy. I do have some, some folks that would like to ask you a few questions or add some comments. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the Maplewood branch was one of the branches that was closed here recently.
It was.
And, and the Library to Go was one of the things that was going to take its place. How has that worked out?
So the Library to Go has really taken off. And with, so, so the, it's centralized at the Maplewood branch, and so they have a whole collection there. They have staff there who, you know, they take the books in, take the books out, they, they select books for people through there. They do programming as well, you know, when they go out and do book talks at these special locations and so on. And so it really is taking off.
So I guess that, that branch was kind of turned into the distribution center, the way I understood it, and, or maybe advanced in that area. So was there a way to track the difference between the walk-in traffic that was going on with minimal amount there was versus the kind of books to go that are going out in that community? Is it similar in nature, or has it picked up?
Well, so my understanding with, with the walk-in traffic with, of Maplewood, is so what we, we do right now for residents who live in the Maplewood area, we deliver materials to their homes, and so they're considered eligible, just as one might be for the Library to Go program. And so if you live in the area, we do that for you. And, and my understanding was that that was how, largely how the Maplewood branch was used, was that people would come in and pick up holds that they, they may have requested materials. And so in this way, we're, they're still able to receive those materials, and we're delivering them.
All right. Well, I appreciate everything y'all do and the new innovative ways that y'all are trying to reach out to the public and make, kind of reinvent the library, if you will. So I really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Mr. Gidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Marjorie, one of the things that I was excited to hear about all the community events that you guys are going to be putting on through the library, one of the things that I was concerned about, are there any after-school programs for kids? A lot of the kids that live in my area, when leaving school, some of them don't have access to computers. Is there anything that you guys have that could maybe address that issue in some way for the library to maybe be a hub for them to go and maybe have access to a computer? You know, because a lot of times, from what I'm understanding, in school now, a lot of times their homework is done online.
Right.
And they have to have access to a computer. Is there anything that you guys are looking into doing or maybe can do to help in that area?
Well, there is definitely something and things we can do, for sure. I know different branches have programs at different times, and some of them have them right after school, and, and I think they're more for teens, which, which might be what you're talking about.
Yes, yes. Junior high, high school?
That's right, yes. There, there are some teen programs that take place at branches that we offer, but it sort of depends on the branch, too, in a way that the, the local branch designs the programs that they feel would fit their community the most. And so I'm not sure which branch you might be...
It's along the lines of, it's, it's Ernest, and a little bit on the lines of the one over in North Lake Charles also in that area.
Okay, okay.
So if, if we could maybe look at that, maybe that would, that would really be helpful.
Sure.
And if anything that I can do to help in that area, by all means, you call me and let me know.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gidry. Mr. McMillan?
Audrey, thanks for what you do with the library. I know we all live busy lives. I was just wondering about your inventory of audiobooks.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Oh, my goodness. Well, so we have an inventory of audiobooks that, we have a large, okay, I guess I'm wondering, do you mean physical or the actual audiobooks that you can...
Yeah, actually audiobooks that we could check out if we were going on a trip or something and had, have time to listen to a book. I mean, is that, is that available through the library?
It is available, yes. You can go into a branch, and you can check. All of our branches have audiobooks that you can check out, and you can, you know, they come with the discs, and then you can do it that way.
It's a pretty good inventory we have in here in the parish. I hadn't, I hadn't really went there to check yet, so I was just kind of getting your input on that.
I'm sorry?
The number, the number of them, we have a pretty large inventory of books that we can check out on audio?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but I would say we have a large collection. You know, one of, now what's popular, or becoming more popular, I should say, is downloading the audiobooks and then listening to them that way. And so to some sense, we're subscribing to those more maybe than we are the physical, but you've got a variety of different ways of accessing them.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
What I think Mr. McMillan was getting at is, do you have a backlog of his shows?
Probably.
No. Don't beat around the bush now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
One serious question. My, my boy loves to read.
Yes.
They do the AR testing and all that stuff.
Oh, yes.
So if he's at home and he's on his tablet, can he access it, access books like that?
Yes.
Okay.
He can access books on his tablet. And actually, now that you mentioned AR, we just launched a new service where you can search our library catalog and, you know, check the box at the AR level that you're interested in, and it will show you everything that the library has in that particular AR category number. So I think even as a parent...
Great.
...myself, I'm looking forward to that.
Good news. Thank you so much for all you do.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Had a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Farnum on item B. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. At this time, we will go back to item four. Item number four, hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Item A, 4035 Gerald Lynn Lane, South DeQuincy area. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, on this particular item, the gentleman has come in and obtained a demolition permit, so we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation. He's...
I'm moving. Second.
That's the recommendation on this.
Okay, we've got a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Mr. President?
To defer for 30 days?
As it is a public hearing, we recommend that you defer action on this for 30 days and let us monitor that situation.
As it is a public hearing, the motion to defer, if there is anyone in the audience who wants to speak on the motion to defer.
Okay. Since it is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Wishes to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on item A? Okay, so we have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Landry, a second by Mr. Brane. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item B, 447 B Road, Moss Bluff area. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, again, we would request that you defer action on this item for another 30 days. We've met with the owners, and they are working through some issues with this particular manufactured home. And we would recommend that you defer for 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Ms. Jessica Thomas? Thank you. So, I have a motion to accept the deferral for 30 days by Mr. White, a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. All right, we will go back to... Item number 12. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 1165 East McNeese Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, from Crying Eagle Brewing Company, LLC. I had a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration of adopting resolutions approving the following items as approved by the Calcasieu Library Board of Control. A, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 109 South Thompson Avenue in Iowa from Capital One Bank. Item B, adopt resolutions approving entering into conditional buy-sell agreements for the purchase of properties located at 1601 Lorry Street in Vinton, Louisiana, and 102 North Pine Street in Dequincy, Louisiana, from Capital One Bank. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Trimmie, and we do have some discussion. Mr. Keith Vincent? Chief, I'm just going right here, brother. Sorry, chief.
Thank y'all for this opportunity. It appears that I'm not...
Chief.
Yes, Chief Vincent, representing Iowa Police Department, Iowa, Louisiana. I'm unclear if the library board or the police juror were aware that the town began the process of purchasing this Capital One building to make a police station. We're running into issues as well. City Hall, we have outgrown. We cannot expand in the park. And we were also in the process of purchasing this building to make a police station. And I'm here to ask for your consideration and respectfully give us some consideration in this as well. In my field, public safety is paramount to anything. And we work very well with Cornell. We participate in the festival. I commend the library. I'm a prime supporter of the library, and they need what they need, just like we do. And unfortunately, we're in a situation here where both of us want the building, and you people are making a decision. And I have one question. It says, for the actual purchase, the other one, you're looking, getting into an agreement. There's been an agreement already made on the Iowa building? Is that what this document states? It says approving the purchase, and then in the item B, you're entering into agreement. So, you've already entered into an agreement with Capital One? That's my question.
Mr. Gatt?
Well, Mr. President, and this is up to you. Questions don't come from the podium. Questions come from you guys. This is a public comment time. So, the rules are, for any speakers, you become educated prior to standing up and speaking. Now, it's up to you whether you guys have any questions. That certainly, I'll have to answer anything. And I didn't hear the question that was posed, honestly. So, if somebody can rephrase it, tell me what I'm...
I'm sorry, I'm just respectfully asking clarification on the document.
Mr. Latour? Well, I know Alberto was working on some stuff with it. Maybe he could come up and maybe just say the state that we're at currently, and that might give a little light to everything.
Alberto Galan, Working Administration, Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. I can't answer that question. There is no formal agreement in place for any of these properties. The items here before you today are to enter into, or to get authority to enter into an agreement for the Iowa property and authority to enter into a conditional buy-sell agreement, which would include a right of first refusal on the other two properties in Vinton-Dequincy. So, we didn't feel comfortable, we couldn't move forward without those, your authority. So, that's what's here before you today.
Okay, Mr. Latour?
Okay. With that being said, basically, where we're at now is the library, I mean, they have their own board. They have their directors. And I understand the need for, you know, the police department and for the library. The current library is situated right next to the property, so I understand the growing pains for each one. The library board has met with their group. They'll be self-funding it. They're not coming to us for money. So, basically, we're just giving them authority to basically use their assets they already currently have. And finally, we're just gonna put a bid on it, and it's up to Capital One on whose bid. And whichever, all the bids have to go with appraisal. We cannot give any more than appraisal. So, basically, both bids will be submitted, Sound of Iways and the library system. So, after that, I mean, it's out of our hands. And also, I understand your growing pains, and I'll do everything I can, no matter, you know, which entity winds up getting it, whether it be you or library system. Have a little bit of gaming funds, maybe we can help out, assist trying to find some property. So, either way, we will not leave you, anyone, high and dry.
That sounds fair.
Thank you, Mr. ...
I just wanted to come to you because we have, the citizens that live in Iowa also need their police protection. And as I said, I think public safety is always paramount. We've outgrown our building, and we need to keep up with the times. And I'm here to ask for your help and consideration when you make this decision to authorize these finances. Just give some weight to that, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna go to our attorney. We really don't have the decision-making process in this. We're just kinda looking at, the library board would like to have it, the police station would like to have it. But we don't have the final say in anything, other than the library board can go ahead and apply for it. Is that what we're saying?
We own the library buildings. The library board has come to you and said, this is a great location for us. We wanna use this building for our purposes later. It is now up to you guys to come forward and approve that purchase. So, if you act tonight, then you will move forward and allow a bid to be made on that building. And it'll be subject to, as Ms. Latour stated, appraisals, and our hands are tied to what we could pay. But that's the process that happens.
Okay, so if we voted no, then they wouldn't be able to buy the building, and the chief would have first priority on the building, I guess. But really, it's not our decision when it comes down to it. Capital One's gonna look at both offers.
You're exactly right.
Okay. That's kinda what I wanted to clear up, to see. I mean, look, I support the library and I support the police department. So, this is a catch-22 for us. We both wanna see them grow and be successful. So, what do we have to do to do that? Maybe we need to look at building new, a new police department. If this is right next to there, contiguous to the property, it may be a win-win for them. So, I hope that when y'all sit down together, we can all work this out through good communications and to move forward in the right direction.
And no matter what happens, we're still gonna support our library.
Absolutely. And we're gonna support our police department.
Not here to cause any disputes. And I just wanted to, you know, y'all vote on it. Y'all are approving these finances for them to make that purchase, and I wanted y'all to hear our side of the request.
Now, we're voting on this tonight to approve the purchase, but they still have to take board action on whether or not they go forward. Is that correct?
I believe the board actually...
They have a library board that has to take board action. It's an independent board.
They already have.
Already have, yeah.
The board's already approved.
Thank you. Thanks for clearing that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Latour?
Oh, that's it. I appreciate you.
Well, if it goes the other way, I will be back, and I appreciate your support either way.
You know, I always will.
You always do.
Thank you, chief. So, I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I think there's another speaker on the side, Ms. Harrison.
You are correct, Mr. Beam.
She can just clarify, I think, a little bit of the library background, so you have full information.
Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. I wanted to come up here just to really see if you had any questions that you had from me about the buildings, purchasing of the buildings. One of our first goal, actually, in the strategic plan is Library is Place. And with that, we designated money for capital improvements, and we looked at our locations and made priorities for improvements. And one of the items under Library is Place, the objectives is to increase usage in our meeting rooms and also to designate quiet spaces at our libraries. And so, we've been doing that. Central Library, Moss Bluff, they're having study rooms built right now. They'll be completed in April, so we're really looking forward to that. So, those are some of the quiet spaces. Sulfur, this year, we've designated money for that, quiet spaces, quiet study rooms at Sulfur. And with Vinton and Dequincy and Iowa, quiet spaces are needed. The buildings are small. And so, and there aren't community meeting centers there. And one of the things we found with the UPS branch was that usage greatly increased with the community meeting room. And it's just such a wonderful asset. And so, those are the things that, for the past year and a half, we've been looking at ways, how can we provide quiet spaces and community meeting spaces and programming spaces in these other branches that we have? And we focused on Dequincy, Iowa, and Vinton, Fontana Memorial Branch. And so, you know, we're excited about these opportunities.
Okay, one second. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you. I guess that was really the root of my question, is there an actual need or is it just an opportunity? Because it is contiguous to your existing facility. Do you really need the space, or is it just an opportunity that you don't wanna pass up?
For the Iowa branch. The, we have, we have no parking, actually, at the Iowa library. And so, that was a huge concern for us, once we found out that the Capital One building might be for sale because we have a use agreement with Capital One. And so, we knew, once the building was sold, we would have no parking whatsoever. And so, we started looking at that as an opportunity, possibly, you know, to help us with that and then allow us to increase space. But we've been looking at other options in town, and we just, we haven't found anything. And then, suddenly, that came about, that, so, so there is a need. We don't have...
I guess it's kinda twofold. You do need some quiet space and maybe some meeting rooms.
Yes.
But the parking space is a big, big factor.
That's an issue for us.
Especially if you have a use agreement already in place with Capital One, and you lose that, and then you lose everything.
Well, right. We do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Latour?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, basically elaborate as far as the need. You know, I get hit up a lot from the people living in Iowa for more computers. You know, like Kevin was saying earlier, a lot of the kids, you know, at school, you need a lot more access than you did years ago. And we just outgrew the facility and the computers. More space and meeting rooms will be amazing. So, I do thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing and bringing this forward to us, and I want to thank the body as well. You go back, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Mr. Latour. Thank you. So, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Trimmie.
Is this for both items?
Yes, on both items.
On both items. Any further discussion? Any objection? Hear none, motion carries. Item 14, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the following as it relates to the Office of Community Development's Community Water Enrichment Fund project. Item A, Community Water Enrichment Fund, 2015-2016 grant application. Item B, cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and Water Works District Number 14 of Ward 5.
No move?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Abshire. On both items, any discussion? Any objection? Hear none, motion carries. Item 15, consideration of adopting a resolution acknowledging that the annual municipal water pollution prevention audit has been conducted for Sewage District Number 11 of Wards 3 and 8 wastewater treatment plant.
Move on 15. Second.
I got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16, take appropriate action on the following bids and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent. A, vehicles for use by the Division of Engineering and Public Works, animal services, and mosquito control. Item B, vehicles for use by the Division of Engineering and Public Works. Item C, Calcasieu Parish Project Number 2017-14 Parish Barn Road Bridge Replacement Project. Agenda note, the parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $589,869.55 from Diamond B Construction Company, LLC be accepted. I have a motion to accept all bullets by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brane. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 17, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the rehabilitation, reconstruction of the dwelling located at 3205 Highway 90 West in Sulfur as substantially complete.
No move.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Mr. Landry, I mean, Mr. Farnum, excuse me.
Thank you. Somebody explain to me a little bit what this is about. This is, it looks like a residence. What, who to direct the question to?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the jury. Tarek Poli, Director of Human Services.
What is the purpose of this facility?
It's part of a grant program that we're participating in. And it's a grant that we applied for back in 2014, where we're rehabbing some dwellings that were damaged by Hurricanes Rita.
Okay. So, this is something that's been in the process for a while now?
Since 2014, yes, sir.
And we went and kinda rehabilitated the house, 'cause it looked like...
It was actually reconstructed.
Whole structure.
It was actually reconstructed.
Completely rebuilt the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Tarek. So, I've got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Landry. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 18, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards and districts. Item A, Ms. Laura P. Richardson, Calcasieu Parish Public Library System. Confirm Ms. Richardson's reappointment by the City of Lake Charles.
Reappoint.
Got a motion to reappoint and a second by Mr. Abshire and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any... Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item B, Mr. Robert Dodgerl, Calcasieu Parish Public Safety Communications District. We got a motion to reappoint Mr. Dodgerl by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item C, Mr. Ronald Phelps, Calcasieu Parish Public Safety Communications District. Got a motion by Mr. Brain to defer for 30 days and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item D, Mr. Kenneth Jerry Merchant, Calcasieu Parish Public Safety Communications District. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Merchant by Mr. Farnum and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item E, Mr. Donald Stinson, Gravity Drainage District Number 2 of Ward 7. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Stinson by Mr. McMillan and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item G, Mr. Freddie Carrier, Gravity Drainage District Number 2 of Ward 7. I got a motion by Mr. McMillan to reappoint Mr. Carrier and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection?
Just one. Oakland, come up one. I was on Oakland.
Say again?
F.
F. Missed F.
Okay, I'm gonna go, let's, can we do G?
Yes.
Let's finish G.
Yeah, let's do that.
Any objection? Motion carries. Item F, Mr. Harry Oakland, Gravity Drainage District Number 2, Ward 7. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan to reappoint Mr. Oakland and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item H, Mr. Tony Darting, Ward 4 Fire Protection District Number 2. I got a motion to reappoint by Mr. Farnum and a second...
Second.
...by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item I...
Move to reappoint.
Mr. Milton Castile, Ward 4 Fire Protection District Number 2. Got a motion to reappoint and a sec, by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item J, Mr. Gordon Probst, Imperial Calcasieu Human Services Authority.
Move to appoint Mr. Aaron LaBeuf.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Abshire to appoint Mr. Aaron LaBeuf, a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item 19, there are no board member advised items for April 2018. Number 20 is an advise that the annual rabies vaccination clinics will be held as follows. A, in Sulfur, Saturday, March 17, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the West Calcasieu Arena. And item B, Lake Charles, Saturday, April 14, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Burton Coliseum Item number 21...
Mine says the first, but that's, that's Easter, that's a Sunday. I don't think that's correct. Is that what you...
No, I wanna... It's April 14th. Did I say the first?
Mine says the first.
Mine says April 14th.
Mine says April 14th.
I read, I read what I...
Yeah, but I wanna talk on that.
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. President.
By all means, Mr. McMillan.
Hey, for the, for the people that may not, I mean, it's kinda read through kinda quick, but this, this is a tremendous opportunity to get your dog vaccinated. It's drive-through, it's easy to do, this is one of those events that the parish puts on to make sure we, make sure rabies, get rabbit through the parish, and, so please take advantage of this. March 17 and Saturday, April 14, drive-through and get your dogs vaccinated. The fee, they're very inexpensive. Mr. Wainwright, would you help me with that?
I'll help you by calling Mr. Nathan Arino up here. I think he has the latest fees. They are reduced. He is here. Nathan, you know him?
And Nathan, if you could, kinda give us just an overview of the event along with the fee. I know it is, is, y'all, y'all line up the cars in there, and a lot of people are getting the dogs vaccinated.
Nathan Arino, 108 Polaris, Dequincy, Louisiana, Director of Animal Services. It's $10 for, low cost, and it's $8 and $10 if your animal's spay or neutered, you get a little price break on that. And then the basic function of the, of the day is, you come in, you drive, it's all drive-through, as you said. You register your pet, and you proceed to a vet tent, get your shot, and then we also have microchipping available for those that wanna microchip their pets. And one misconception about microchips is it's not a tracking device. A lot of people think when they get that chip, that when Fido comes up missing, they can find him somewhere in town, but the first thing our officers do when they find a stray dog is scan it and hopefully return that dog to its owner, so it does allow us to be able to scan that dog and find its owner a lot quicker. So that's one thing we offer, and we put somewhere around 2,000 animals per clinic through that clinic, so it's quite an operation, and I invite all you jurors out. If you haven't seen it, it's, it's a pretty, we're unique in the, in the country, and we're the only people that do drive-through, so it's worked, works really efficient, and thanks to our vet community for really supporting that. They come out and, and actually...
They do.
Man six dens for that, so...
And if your dog's not chipped, it should be. How much is the chipping?
How, I have to get back to you on that. I think it's $12, but I...
Well worth it, whatever it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arino. Great job, as always. Item 21, receive report from Mr. Dick Grimmion, Director, Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness Regarding the River Flood Stages.
Thank you, Mr. Baras. We, earlier, Mr. Baras signed a emergency declaration for Calcasieu Parish. This is your first one that you've done, I think, is your duties as president.
Bittersweet.
This, the situ, we got two situations. One is on the Sabine River, which we have good, better news, and then Calcasieu River, not so good. Start with the Sabine first. It's, this afternoon, it was about a half a foot from crest, so pretty much whatever water is being seen right now, particularly like Niblets Bluff, Starks area, that's about as high as it's gonna get, and it should be going down within the next day or so. And it'll, it will taper off. It's at what they call moderate flood stage. Just as a reference point, it's about seven feet right now below what it was during the maximum crest in the 2016 event, so hopefully we won't have any houses with water. Over on the Calcasieu River, particularly the east, the Calcasieu River Main Channel and English Bayou is predicted to go to, up to eight feet on Sunday or Monday. Right now, it's at around six feet. There's already water across some parts of the road in, on the Goss Ferry Road area. Mr. White, I'm not sure about South Perkins Ferry. It looks like the West Fork is gonna be okay. Calcasieu River is gonna come up to eight feet, probably Tuesday, it'll be what they call a level crest, it'll stay up for a few days and then go back down, so unfortunately, our action level for closure on the, on the Calcasieu River is seven feet, and we'll be there tomorrow. So as of noon tomorrow, the river will be closed to recreational boat traffic through the duration of the flooding. And again, just a reminder, we've, we had a lot of calls about commercial traffic. We will advise the Coast Guard that we've put the closure into effect, but we, we don't have the ability to regulate the commercial traffic, so you probably will still see, still be seeing tow boats and barges and things during the flood period.
Mr. White?
Mr. Grimmion, what's the forecast for North Weas, North Louisiana for the spillway?
We talked to Jonathan Brazil, who's our hydrologist at the Weather Service. He's not concerned right now. He said unless they get a lot more rain, and I'm assuming you're talking about Toledo Bend. Toledo Bend, if you looked at the gauges today, it took a sharp rise of about a foot. Well, it turns out that was because of the north winds. It was just an anomaly. It's actually, the stages are actually going down, and they're expected to continue downward, although the gates, as they stand right now, 11, 11 gates at two feet is gonna stay that way, probably for a little while longer.
You go back. Thank you, Mr. Grimmion, for what you do and your staff. I got a...
Second.
Oh, got a motion to receive report by Mr. Landry, second by Ms. Trimmie. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I have a personal point of privilege, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to say welcome to one of my favorite mayors in Calcasieu Parish, Mr. Kenny Stinson. Kenny, thank you for coming to our meeting. Appreciate that. Hey, tonight, we have a guy in the audience running for U.S. Congress. Usually when these guys come here, we give them an opportunity to say a few words. With this jury's consideration, I would like to call Mr. Josh Gilery to the microphone and let him have a few words. Mr. President?
For sure. Welcome, Mr. Gilery. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Josh Gilery, 323 East University, Lafayette, Lafayette, Louisiana, 3rd Congressional District, inside the district.
There we go.
Again, Mr. President, members of the police jury, and my friends and fellow neighbors in Lafayette, but also Lake Charles, and Calcasieu is back to be, it's great to be back here. It's always welcoming. I appreciate you, and I also appreciate you, Mr. President, for allowing me to give a few words. Again, my name is Josh Gilery. I'm running for Congress out of the 3rd Congressional District, and I'm running for many reasons. One of which is our district deserves in Washington a voice, an adequate voice, and I'll bring it really close to home. Calcasieu Parish is significantly lacking a voice in Washington. I'm very cognizant and not make many promises, especially on, that I can't keep, especially on this campaign. On day one, after being signed, sworn in, I will have a field rep and a field office in Lake Charles, Louisiana, and I'm glad you videoed me. I hope it's recorded, you can hold me that, day one. But our district deserves not just a voice, we deserve someone that lives in our district that feels the legislation that comes out of Washington. Just like everybody on this council, just like everybody in this room, you know, bare bone minimum, you should live in the district that you represent, because you need to know what the best interests of our people are, the people that you live by, because when you come home from Washington, you need to be able to get good, bad, and ugly, honest critique, and honest critique, so you know what to bring back when you go to Washington. I am your neighbor down the road, Lafayette Parish. I live there with my wife and children. I'm a small business owner, practice family law, also constitutional law, but for many years in the afternoon, in the summers and the weekends, you could see me doing what I love to do best, which is coach middle school football. And, and that also rolls off the tongue a lot easier, by the way, when someone asks you, "What do you do for a living?" I'm a, I'm a football coach. I just practice law on the side, so easier icebreaker. But I'm also very blessed and humbled to be an Army veteran. I served in Iraq in 2005 as a cavalry officer, and I believe there's other veterans in the room, and I think I can adequately say for all of us that wearing the uniform of our country, without a shadow of a doubt, has been the single greatest honor of my life. You know, I, before I was an officer, I was enlisted, and on June 19, 2001, I raised my right hand, I swore an oath to the Constitution, and I, and I did that because I felt compelled to do so. I felt compelled to give back to something greater than myself. I felt compelled to give back to a country that's given me so much and to you so much. And that same calling, that same calling I felt back in 2001, I feel today. I feel called to run for this office right now in this time, in this district, because just like you, I look at Washington and I see, I see the inefficiencies, I see the inadequacies. You know, I see the environment of this, this dug-in position where there's an inability to come up with a solution, and I'm tired of it. I'm also tired of sending people to Washington that come to our, our district on the campaign trail and say one thing, and then they get up there and they do another. We need leadership. We need leadership. You know, quite frankly, our congressmen should be focused on one thing and one thing only, solutions, and not just soundbites, you know? So I know it's getting late, I'll run down, as our next congressman, my priorities are very straightforward. Balance the budget. It's not a Democrat or Republican issue. Balance the federal budget. This, this police jury knows a little thing or two about fiscal responsibility, because let me tell you something, they spend more money than, than what's allocated to them. You will let them know, as you should, and so too should Congress be held to that same standard. I own a business, I cannot write a check that I don't have money in the bank for, or I can, but, you know, Mr. DeRogé and other DAs might have a problem with that, so would the bank, you know? Again, so too should Congress be held to that standard. We have to look at our coast. We have to look at our coast. Coastal restoration, again, is not a polit, does not belong to a political party, but boy, we feel it, and we feel it hard, but we can do better, and I know we can. I wanna create jobs just like everyone in this room. I wanna, and, and look, Lake Charles is booming, and that's a credit to your leadership, that's a credit to our city councils leadership, many of the city councils and local business leaders, but this success that we feel in Calcasieu is not shared by other parishes in our district, and I, I believe, I don't, I don't think you should come to anybody with a problem without a recommended solution, and my recommended solution is twofolds. One, partner with local leaders. Partner with you. Listen. Have field reps, have a representative that will come to you and listen to what the needs of our people are, because you know, you know what's good in Westlake and Lake Charles and Sulfur better than anybody in Washington, and I will partner with you. You need a voice. You need a voice. Also, look, I don't believe every regulation is bad, we're a nation of laws, we need laws, we need regulations, but there are regulations that are redundant, you know? Efficiency should, works well in the private sector, it should work in the government, too. And again, that's just a fellow communication between leadership at, at the multiple levels. So I look forward, you know, to the future, I really do. I still believe our greatest days are ahead of us. You know, we are Americans. We agree more than we disagree. This political climate that we're in doesn't always have to be there, and I believe it starts from the local level, which you guys share every, every month, and I thank you for your service. I ask you for your support, I ask for everybody's support, our vote, the election's November 6 of this year, and again, my name is Josh Gilery, I run for Congress, and I ask for God's blessing on everyone here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery.
Mr. Gilery, hang on, I did a question real quick. Of course, I wanna just go ahead and get in here early, because you are our congressman. We need a new overpass in Westlake and I-10 Bridge.
You know, I had a whole, I had a whole, a few, three or four paragraphs on...
I wouldn't entertain that if I was you, man.
He's right, he's right, an overpass in Westlake. I believe there's a road that goes from Westlake to Moss Bluff, too, right? That has bridges on it. See, I live in this district. I've seen the traffic. No, it's, it's good, absolutely. Are there any other questions from the...
Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Good luck, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Third.[1784.54]